But before we do that, when I call for the moment of silence, if you could please remember Mr. Kurt Wonderly, a 16-year veteran of this school board who we lost recently, and also, not everybody knew this, I guess, sorry. And our children that we lost in England this last couple of days, please remember them in your thoughts as well. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please call the roll?
Yes. Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Ms. Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Ms. Seabird.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Williams. Ms. Alonso.
Here.
Ms. Maddick.
Thank you. Dr. McGorick, we have additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, on the consent agenda is the personnel ratification. On the discussion agenda, student achievement, the MCPS STEM Summer of 2017 camps. And on the action agenda, under new business, the appointment of the student representatives for the 2017-18 school year.
Very exciting, thank you. Do we have superintendent's announcements and spotlights?
Sure do.
Ms. Rafford?
Thank you, Chairman Di Maria and Dr. McGorick, other members of the board, good evening to you and certainly good evening to everyone that has joined us on tonight. First of all, I am very pleased to have a group of phenomenal young women from Osborne High School here with us. The ladies are here to share information about a powerful network that they are a part of, and Mr. Sam Morton is a counselor at Osborne, and he is also the faculty advisor for the group, so I'm going to ask Mr. Morton to come and allow him to introduce his group so that they can share their information with us.
I almost said "good morning."
It does say quarter 12.
So I'm still in the morning. Again, I'm Sam Morton, school counselor, Osborne High School. I have a great group of young ladies here that are going to be speaking to you about a five-year program. It's called Vozes Latinas. It's about them empowering their voices academically, personal, socially, and in their career development. They may be a little nervous, so please bear with them, and I'm going to, we're going to grab Iris Alonso off of your board there. She is a member of Vozes Latinas as well, and I'm going to let them get started.
Just make sure you give her back, please.
Today we are introducing to you our fifth-year program at Osborne High School, Vozes Latinas. My name is Brandy Benitez. I'm a sophomore at Osborne. My parents are from Honduras, and I represent my family, my culture, my identity, Vozes Latinas in Osborne High School. We would like to take the opportunity to speak to you today about who we are and the mission of Vozes Latinas. My name is Iris Alonso. I'm a senior, as you guys know. My parents are from Mexico. I represent the black sheep in my family, students of Manassas City as student representative, and Vozes Latinas. I will attend the NOVA pathway program for two years before transferring to VCU. Oh, sorry. The mission statement of Vozes Latinas is the empowerment of Hispanic females through personal, social, academic, and career development. Our vision statement is to produce confident, educated, and ambitious young women, creating a lifelong community in support of each other's life pathways.
Hello, my name is Gabriela Costa-Massias. I am an 11th grade student at Osborne High School. My parents are from Mexico. I represent my parents' accomplishments, Vozes Latinas in Osborne High School. Vozes Latinas is a group, but the definition of a club is an organization dedicated to a particular interest or activity who may be represented by officers who speak for students or members. A group is where members may develop the trust to grow as individuals by learning from others and members sharing similar traits and lifestyles while going through the group process. Vozes Latinas is a group and a developing program. Vozes Latinas is not an extracurricular activity. It is more so an opportunity for members to bond, share, and grow in a safe, confidential, and caring environment.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Perdomo. I'm a 12th grade student. My parents are from El Salvador. I represent my parents' past and future in Osborne High School by being a hard-working student. I plan on attending NOVA through the pathway program then transfer to George Mason, majoring in business. A great example of commitment is when a group member transferred to Manassas Park High School and still committed and made time for group meetings after school here at Osborne High School. One of the expectations for group is what is studying group stays in group. Some people aren't ready to meet these expectations, which is perfectly okay. Group isn't for everyone, but once you're Vozes, you're always Vozes.
Hello, my name is Yasmin Maldonado. I'm a senior with parents originating from Mexico. I represent my mother's ambition for an American dream. I plan to attend VCU or GMU, majoring in criminal justice, in the hopes of becoming an FBI special agent. Vozes group topics vary in academic, personal, social aspects that impact Hispanic females and females in general. Example of these are balancing relationships in academics in high school, dealing with gender and cultural stereotypes, sex trafficking, and a great group topic such as living in between two worlds. We're often expected to take care of others before ourselves, taking care of younger siblings where our parents work, translating for our parents while at a young age and barely being able to understand language ourselves. We are mostly first-generation firm members pursuing higher education and not only to attend college but to graduate high school. We have a huge weight on our shoulders to navigate through high school ourselves, often subjected to do what our parents' ambition is doing. We have the weight on our shoulders to do good in school for real the reason our parents came here in the first place, so we can do the things they never could.
Hello, my name is Clarissa Cruz Lopez. My parents are Mexican, and I represent my mother's optimism and courage. I represent an outstanding student here at Osborne High School. I plan to go to NOVA through the pathway program and then me join nursing. I will then transfer to GMU to further my education, so. An activity that was meaningful for me was the "I represent" activity. The purpose was to brainstorm as many representations of yourself as possible, note them down on a note card, and then share them out with other members of the group. We all represent many different things, so it was a pretty cool activity for me. We also provide outreach to eighth-grade Hispanic females at Metz Middle School, helping them get excited and motivated about their education as well as learning to empower themselves. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Casada. I am a senior. My parents are from Mexico. I represent my family, a college help as president, Vozes Latinas in Osborne High School. I will attend Northern Virginia Community College throughout the pathway program with hopes of transferring to a four-year university. Field trips. Vozes Latinas has focused many of its, oh wait, oh, I'm sorry. Rad rape-aggression defense. Training completed through the Manassas City Police Department. Andaki ally, training through George Mason University's Mason's Dreamers Communication Skills Training, and participation for Metz Middle School Hispanic Female Outreach. Rad training has helped us become physically prepared in the unfortunate event of being attacked wherever we may be, especially as most of us prepare to leave for college this year. Andaki ally training has allowed us to be aware of our resources available in order to help not only those closest but others as well if need. Metz training consisted of learning how to effectively talk to younger females in order to help them with transition from middle school, from middle to high school as they prefer to be a freshman. Okay. As Vanessa said earlier, once you're Vozes, you're always Vozes. Vozes Latinas currently has 25 members at OHS and then 25 members attending and graduating from universities across Virginia, such as the ones listed on the board. We also recently have one, actually Yasmin's sister, who graduated from the Marine Corps, so we're really proud of her. So in closing, the mission statement of Vozes Latinas is the empowerment of Hispanic females through personal, social, academic, and career development. Oh. This was from VCU. Did we do the college trips? Oh, I think we skipped a slide, so we're going to go back. Okay, so field trips. Vozes Latina has focused many of its field trips with college visits to Virginia Commonwealth for University, Mary Ballin University, George Washington University, and George Mason. Vozes Latina has also taken field trips to the National Mall in Washington, D.C., as well as Eastern Market in the District for Cultural Development and Mary's Walk in the National and the Shandell National Park for hiking. Our most important field trip to date has been meeting with Congresswoman Barbara Comstock and Ms. Nator on Capitol Hill. That's it, thank you.
Glad you said the lady. Sometimes being up here is very difficult, lots of very difficult things to go through, and sometimes a real pain, but you all make it all worthwhile. Your efforts are so important, not only for you guys, but for the young ladies coming after you. I am so incredibly impressed and proud of you. I just can't say enough, and thank you for what you're doing for yourselves and for the other young ladies coming after you. Anyone else?
You said it well. Ma'am?
I want to congratulate you on your leadership and voice. Over a year ago, they met with me to talk about who they were and what they wanted and what they desired to give, and they reached out to Metz. They've been working for two months on this presentation so that they could say really what they've been doing and what their purpose is, and I'm very proud of the work they're doing, and they are really going their next steps. That next door they go through, they're going to be absolutely wonderful.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
So tonight, this is our award season, and so over the next couple of board meetings, you will see a lot of the staff that has been recognized for various awards, and tonight I would like to begin with sharing information about our first, second, and third-year Outstanding Teachers of the Year, and then also our Outstanding Mentor Teacher of the Year. They were honored at a special ceremony on May 11th that was held at Mayfield Intermediate School. They will also be recognized at the Night of Excellence this Thursday, which is sponsored by the Manassas City Public Schools Education Foundation at Osborne High School. So I will begin, first of all, and I'll ask Dr. McGorick and Mr. Di Maria to come down because we'll take a group picture with all of them, the ones that were able to be here tonight. We will begin with our outstanding first-year elementary teacher, and that is Kendall Hampton. Ms. Hampton is a third-grade teacher at Round Elementary who works tirelessly in and outside of school to plan for maximum student learning and to make her classroom an engaging place. Ms. Hampton has exhibited excellent instructional practices in her classroom that incorporate engaging activities, movement, research-based practices while infusing creativity and student interest into every activity. She has built strong relationships with her students while holding high expectations for every student in her class. Despite the challenges of first-year teaching, she takes the time to support and encourage others throughout her building as well, and congratulations to you, first-year teacher. Thank you. Outstanding first-year secondary teacher is Mr. Paul Hickey. Mr. Hickey is a music teacher at Mayfield Intermediate who has students thrive under his guidance and experience music and music-making in a way that fosters a love and appreciation of both music and learning. Mr. Hickey has strategically and purposefully designed a classroom where all students are actively engaged and focused on various facets of music education. He welcomes students at the beginning of the year by playing percussion in the bus circle to create an upbeat and exciting environment for students. He provides opportunities for select students to come in at the end of the school day and freestyle on a variety of instruments to promote positive behavior among students who may be struggling behaviorally or academically. Congratulations to you, Mr. Hickey. Outstanding second-year teacher, David Brungard. Mr. Brungard is a STEM teacher also from Mayfield Intermediate School who has incorporated technology into his lessons by providing his students a web link for a video that allows students to move at their own pace. He has a strong work ethic and commitment to education, which shows in the way he prepares for his daily lessons and continually exceeds instructional expectations. Mr. Brungard relies on developing relationships with his students in order to help them succeed and provides them with a comfortable learning environment where children can grow and learn without any fear of making a mistake. Mr. Brungard is extremely involved in the MCPS community by coaching soccer, organized an intramural basketball league for MCPS staff, and works closely with the Shirt and Tie Club at Mayfield. Congratulations to you. And I believe our other two couldn't be here tonight for previous engagements, so we certainly congratulate each of you for representing our first-year beginning teacher program so well, and the fact that your peers are fit to recognize you is awesome, so thank you all for all that you're doing for Manassas City Public School students. Okay? All right. Yeah, that's good. It's all right. Yep. There we go. Everybody ready? One, two, three. There'll be one more. One, two, three. Excellent. Thank you, congratulations. Uh huh. Thank you.
Board committee reports. Does anybody have anything from academics? Mr. Williams is missing. Okay. Mr. Albrecht, anything from education support?
No reports.
Ms. Kiefer, policy?
Yes, sir. The Policy Committee met tonight, prior to the meeting, to go over policies that have been put forward by Staff Review under Sections B, C, E, G, I, J, K, and L.
Was that K, N, L?
K and L.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, I'm going in order.
Okay, good.
So we will bring a first reading to the board on the 6/13 meeting of those policies, but they really reflect BSBA updates at this point.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Albrecht, finance?
No, sir, no report.
Ms. Seabird, personnel?
No report.
Thank you. This is where it gets fun, guys. Ms. Alonso, would you have any comments, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
They're leaving.
It's okay. I just want to start by saying this Friday, with the end of spring sports, is the OHS Spring Sports Banquet, so come see us, get our awards for all our achievements. And I see Ethan and Jan sitting there. Makes me kind of sad, but then again, it makes me so excited and finally over, finally done with high school. But I just want to congratulate them. I know it was a really tough interview process, tough application process, but you guys made it. I'm so proud of you two. And with that, there's 13 days until graduation, so I'm pretty excited for that. And I just want to end off with saying my prayers go out to the Manchester Arena, tac victims, families, and friends. I know it must be a really hard time, and I couldn't even imagine going through that, so I'm saying my prayers and love. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. O'Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Young women left. I was going to thank them for coming and telling us about their program, and congratulations to our teachers, and I guess they left too. All right. Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned this, but I just want to say a quick word. We lost a former board member recently, Kurt Wonderly, and he was always, my experience with him was always, he was a true gentleman, and I always enjoyed talking to he and his wife down at the Things I Love, the gift shop in town, and he represented the community well during his 16 years of service to the school board. Last week has been filled with so many exciting events. Congratulations to all the seniors honored at the Summa Collab presentations last week. It was amazing to hear the accomplishments of all these students and the bright futures ahead of them. Congratulations to the Metz Guitar Ensemble and Orchestra for your outstanding performance at the Hershey Competition. Both the Guitar Ensemble and Orchestra received superior ratings, and the orchestra was named Grand Champions of the event. And on behalf of the board, I recently attended the Washington Area Board of Education meeting where they had presentations by Fairfax County on their Maker Space Program and their ESOL Program. Both presentations were informative, but I know here in Manassas we have probably the best ESOL program in the state, and our STEM labs all are comparable to what Fairfax County calls as their Maker Spaces. And also, superintendent informed me that we are transitioning some available space at Osborne into Maker Space for the high school students. Also attended the State Schools Advisory Committee meeting where we discussed ways to present more health and safety information to the community through the school's websites. By this fall, there will be both increased information available and greater ease in accessing information. And yesterday at the CTE Advisory Committee, we met, and there will be opportunities for upcoming internships and apprenticeships this summer for CTE students and graduates, so be sure to watch for that. They're developing a presentation series to engage English learner students and their parents on topics and instructional components related to career and technical education. Paul Steiner and Susan McNair presented recently at the Manassas and Bull Run Rotary regarding their upcoming startup with cybersecurity instruction, and both Paul and Susan have been instrumental in building this program and reaching out to the community to find partners in the CTE effort. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Williams?
Well, I was going to say something to the girls too, but they've already gone. I wanted to let them know. I get nervous too up here, so you shouldn't worry about that. And I did hear Mrs. Rafford discuss a little bit about the Night of Excellence. I guess we've heard that a couple of times tonight, but I wanted to give a little bit more detail. This is in conjunction with the Division-Wide Art Show at Osborne High School this Thursday evening, May 25. Night of Excellence is an event sponsored by the Manassas City Public School Education Foundation. If you have never heard of it, please look them up on Facebook. They have also a webpage. We're always looking for donations. They really do support this school, provide lots of funds for our STEM program, cybersecurity. They're a great partner of ours, so if you're looking for something to help, we'd love donations. What we do is the foundation highlights the teachers and students of the Manassas City Public Schools. The art show itself begins at 5:30. The program begins at 6:30. The celebration will recognize award-winning staff members in the division, scholarship recipients, and also innovated teachers, people who really come to the table with some new ideas, they'll be recognized as well, and we really, really appreciate the impact that the foundation does make on us as well as our students. The Manassas Education Foundation will have snacks. They'll have a silent auction to help raise some money as well, so we'd love for you to attend. Also, the Metz track team, and my sons came home this evening, they came in fifth, they have their regional track meet today at Patriot High School, and we came in fifth, which I thought was very good. Thank you, Mr. Coach Williams. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Seabird?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say thank you to Vozes Latinas for your presentation tonight. I had heard about your group, and I'd heard some great things, but it was really nice to get a breakdown of all the wonderful things you've been doing and the work you've done. Thank you. Congratulations to our teachers that were honored in the spotlight tonight, and I look forward to celebrating you at upcoming events, either at the Night of Excellence or at the Night Under the Stars. Again, Night of Excellence, Thursday night, starting with the art show at 5:30 at Osborne High School. It's been an exciting time of year with the band and orchestra competitions and chorus, and I've been able to serve as a chaperone for the last two Saturdays, so I'm glad that part is done. And I also wanted to highlight the SEAC Committee. SEAC is S-E-A-C, and it's the Special Education Advisory Committee. If that's something that you are interested in, you can find more information on the MCPSA website, and I wanted to say thank you to the staff and to the parent volunteers that helped make this a successful committee. Later tonight, we're going to be introducing our new student representatives, and I'm really looking forward to graduation on June 12th. It'll be my first graduation for Osborne, being there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you, sir. I'm glad the ladies came back. I wanted to say thank you, both for presenting in front of us and to talking about the good work you do. You're inspirational, and I think that all of the qualities that each of you have are things that all of us should strive to do as leaders, and so, thank you for sharing that, and we look forward to continuing to hear about the work that you and the others behind you will be doing, both in the world and also here in Manassas City. So thank you for being here tonight. I also wanted to congratulate our teachers. Without you, we are nothing, so thank you and congratulations to you for all of the hard work and the recognition you're getting from your peers and from all of us. Much of what I was going to say already has been said so eloquently by those before me, so I did want to, every time this time of year I say this, I know. Last week was National Police Memorial Week, where it's really dedicated to remembering those who've given up the ultimate sacrifice to protect each of us. This past weekend, we had an officer-involved shooting here in our city. We have two officers, luckily they're okay, but it's both them and their families in the department that have things to deal with now, so we are blessed that they are okay, but it just reminded me, as a wife of an officer who has been involved in a shooting, it's a long journey, and we just extend our prayers to everybody that's involved. And just despite politics and divisiveness sometimes as it relates to this, I just want to make sure we all thank those who do try to keep us safe each day. So, thank you, and thank you to our men and women in blue and all of our service people that keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I think what you said about Vozes Latinas is spot-on. It's all of our youth groups, clubs, and what they said is, it really doesn't matter what you call yourself. It's a collection of our students and our student leaders who get together to support themselves and learn, and that's really what our society is about, so thank you all for coming today and presenting to us. As others before me have said, to our teachers, you really are the mentors for those children. And...
Mr. Chair, I think what you said about Vozes Latinas is spot-on, it's all of our youth groups, clubs, and what they said is, it really doesn't matter what you call yourself, it's a collection of our students and our student leaders who get together to support themselves and learn, and that's really what our society is about, so thank you all for coming today and presenting to us. As others before me have said, to our teachers, you really are the mentors for those children, and thank you for choosing a profession that will last for many years. No one said it, so I will thank City Council, they've passed a tax rate that should fully fund the capital improvements and the needs of the city for the following year, I know it's a difficult decision for them, there's pressures on both sides, just as the President submitted a budget yesterday, and the funding gains in our nation's capital will start with that. The reality is, no matter what the President, who, I'm trying to think of the right word that we learned when I was taking History 101 or whatever, I think the President proposes and the Congress disposes, I think is the right way it's called?
Andy said yes, I'm going with him.
I had to dust off some cells on that one. No matter what Congress does, the reality is more and more of the burden is being put on locality, and that's just a sad fact or a fact we've all got to come with, so. I think next week, a couple of us on Friday are going down to Richmond to go to the Virginia School Board Association Law Conference, and I'll also be at the Board Meeting on Thursday, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate your time, I know I say a lot, but the time that you put in at VSBA is very valuable to us and we appreciate your vacation time that you use for us. I'm not going to rehash what everybody else said, as per usual, the Night of Excellence, Thursday night, Mr. Albrecht will be saying a few words for us, it's my anniversary, I'll be taking my excellent teacher to dinner that evening. OHS Graduation on the twelfth, it's always a great evening, it'll be your first, I don't know how many it will be for me, I was at the first one, I know that much, and the second one, the second one was mine. Police Week. Yeah, I appreciate all they do, but as I say every year after you say, every year, I appreciate the families. I know it would be easier to go out and do the job than send somebody, somebody out to do the job, so thank you and your family and the rest of the police families. Mr. Wonderly, I served with Mr. Wonderly for four years, I think? Didn't always get along with Mr. Wonderly, we had our disagreements, which was good, if you always get along with everybody, you can't get anything done. And sixteen years is a long time to be on this Board, eleven years is a long time, sixteen years or twenty-eight or whatever it is for the old guy is a long time, and Mr. Wonderly put in a lot of time for us and for our kids, and I really, really appreciate that. Marilyn Malloy, she worked at Baldwin for thirty-three years, we lost her recently as well, thirty-three years to put into a school system is incredible, and we thank her very much for her service and we send our thoughts out to her family. We will move on to citizen comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the services, policies and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools, because we have an agenda to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes, we appreciate the time you have taken to be here, we treat citizens' comments as a public hearing and we do not engage in conversation with speakers, the lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern, please be respectful when presenting your comments. I have no one signed up, is anyone that would like to speak? And we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, move the consent agenda as presented, don't think we modified anything, right, we just added items to the agenda. Is that right?
Did we? No, it's modified, personnel?
As modified.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-zero. Discussion agenda, STEM Summer 2017 Camps. You're up.
Thank you, good evening Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGorick and members of the Board, I'm very excited to be here this evening to share with you an update of our STEM Summer Camps for our students in grades two through eight. So the purpose of our STEM Camps... Okay? No, that's really all right. But the purpose of our STEM Camps is to help our students develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, expose students to content through real-world projects using design briefs, allow students to play with a purpose, and give teachers a place to try new things that they can use in the classroom, excuse me, during their school year. So the teachers can use the equipment that's purchased into camps during the school year if they want to integrate it in their classrooms, in their curriculum. The Elementary Intermediate Summer Children's Engineering Camp is at Hayden Elementary, and it's for rising second through sixth grade, last summer we had one-hundred-and-sixty-five campers, this year so far we have sixty campers registered, however, the registration is still open until May thirty-first. The engineering camp has been at Hayden Elementary for the last four years and will continue to be there again this year. The cost of a full week of camp from eight to noon is twenty dollars, thanks to the funding we receive from the Education Foundation, we also have summer camp, summer scholarships available. MCPs sends five teachers from each elementary school in Mayfield to the Children's Engineering Conference each year, and that's where teachers learn a lot about the engineering design process, and they use the design briefs as a way to facilitate student learning. We also have many presenters that we have from the city that present at these conferences every year. The Middle School Camp is new this year, and we're very excited to offer this to our rising seventh and eighth graders. We have developed a coding camp here where the kids can learn and practice a simple scripting language for programming, and these skills can be transferred to other courses that they'll have when they get into high school. So right now, I'd like to show you a quick little video of what the students are going to be doing in the summer camp this year.
Sphero looks like a BB-8, but it's a rolling robot that's been around for years. It's also a programmable educational toy. The education-targeted Sphero Spark launched last year along with an app that works with step-by-step programming, which can create and share educational plans with teachers and students. The new version, Spark Plus, adds an anti-glare and anti-scratch coating and faster tap to connect Bluetooth smart for educators using a bunch in classrooms. If you haven't used Sphero Spark, it shows how much this hundred-twenty-nine-dollar robot can do, painting, maze running, precise turning, and this little ball's waterproof and shockproof. Sphero has LED lights and inductive charging, and its motors can make it spin at various speeds and directions, using Android, iOS or Amazon tablets and phones to remote control it. Unlike BB-8, Sphero is silent, but the updated Lightning Labs app adds programmable sounds to make it feel like your little coding buddy is beeping and booping. There are hundreds of free activities to browse and crowd-created projects curated by Sphero. It's already in use in over a thousand schools, and the new app has both Sphero and community-created activities, some use coding or building and completing tasks like chariot or boat enclosures to win races, or designing completing a maze, others model systems like planetary motion or use the Spheros to make art or just dance. A number of activities are designed as STEM challenges, and the included course instructions can organize into classes in-app. It's another great example that coding toys for kids are everywhere, and even without a class on my own to teach, they're pretty fun too.
So our summer camps are supported by MCPs, and MCPs is the ones that pays the teachers. The Education Foundation pays for the T-shirts, the snacks, materials and supplies, along with the scholarships. So looking to the future, the camps provide a foundation for the future by building a pipeline of learners that have the necessary skills for high-skill, high-wage jobs, providing students with skills to access high-school STEM pathways and strengthen the MCPs K-12 STEM programs. Registration is open, you can access any of these links from the Division website, and you can pull down the flyers and registration forms. And I want to thank you very much for giving me a few moments to share with you the summer camp opportunities that we have for our students.
Thank you very much, are there any questions, comments?
Just a comment, sir, I mean, I think some people have heard this story, but before I ran for the School Board, which as you've already pointed, that was a long time ago, I was actually in, having dinner with the Dean of Engineering at North Carolina A&amp;T, and I was actually pumping her for education kind of questions and thinking of helping in a campaign. And back then, she looked at me and said, "The problem with education is for sixteen years, we tell people, if they look on someone else's paper, they're wrong, and the first thing you people do in industry is you say, 'You, you and you, go figure it out,' and you can't figure out why people can solve a problem." And the first things you talked about tonight were problem-solving and getting children ready, getting our students ready for the workplace of the next generation, and that is so spot-on. I mean, the coding class, the number-one language spoken in the world today is computer programming, everything else is second, so what we're doing is truly creating a workforce, creating, making sure the students we have, the citizens of Manassas, are ready for the next generation, I think it's fantastic.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Twenty-seventeen Technology Update, Mr. Bobby Barrett. It kind of rolls off the tongue, you like to say the whole name there.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Could be a BJ or something.
Purpose of being with you here tonight, providing an update, annual update on our technology for our school division. I'm going to work here.
Need some help getting that to work?
Yeah.
It's too low tech.
Just as a reminder, so I stood before you about a year ago, presenting the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen Technology Plan, Educational Technology Plan, just a reminder, we developed it as a strategic tool to help us with our planning, our purchasing decisions, provided a roadmap of where we want to go, took an assessment of where we are, evaluated the gaps, and has helped us definitely this past year try to close that gap. In the current strategic plan, our goal is, is a focus area of five here, creating twenty-first century skills is really what it comes down to, and then the goal too is our, making sure our technology is available, reliable, up-to-date, and able to meet the needs of our instructional, instructional students. Want to help me?
You are on your own, brother.
I know. So how do we do this, identify our needs, we use a multi-approach here, we did formalize a needs assessment strategy, we used Division surveys, we sent out a survey last October to, to our Division stakeholders, it was outside, it was made public as well, got feedback that way, we ran several inventory management systems to keep account of all of our technologies, make sure things are reaching the end of the life cycle that we're planning for replacements. Our professional development reports from our professional development team provide us information with the skill sets that are currently being trained, what is laid out in the future, that will be needed. Our balanced scorecard metrics, as we use in the past, help us annually to identify deficiencies, where we're falling through, and then we do a lot of research within industry, we bring in vendors, our support partners come in several times a year, give us updates on what's new, what's trending, how that can apply to the educational world, and come take all that together and make some determination, some decisions on where we're headed. And so I want to provide an update just on some various topics tonight of what we've done throughout this year, I'll just remind you that our technology team consists of two different, we're made up of two different teams from two different departments, so we have the instructional side, which falls under Dr. Saunders and the Curriculum Instruction, that's our instructional technology team members, they're the licensed professionals in each of our schools, and then I run the Information Technology Department, we're more the technical aspect of it, but our two teams work very, very closely together each and every day. And so, one of our areas was to build technology leadership, tied that with professional development. I'm pleased to say that at every school this year, we were able to launch school-based technology committees, they're made up of multiple stakeholders from the schools who meet regularly to determine those, the needs of that school, and to take our Division Technology Plan and try to fit that into their individual roles. Just recently as well, those, those teams each submitted a building-level technology plan, so a mini, a mini technology plan that mirrors ours, and so our Technology Advisory Board had an opportunity to evaluate those, provide some feedback, we provided those back to those committees, they're in their final review stage, and they will be adopted at the school level and posted on their websites in the coming months. Our ITTS has taken on a new strategy for the T-SIPS certification, that's a state certification for technology skills, they've improved their tracking strategies to ensure that all the teachers have mastered the content. We hold technology training days at all the schools at our central office, various times of the year, specific applications or skill sets are highlighted, teachers and administrative staff have opportunity to come in and learn new technologies. We attend a lot of conferences and trainings, just some of them are VISTI and COSIN, a lot of academics, Google, Power School University, Discovery Stream and NearPod, we've had a lot of vendors come in and provide some professional development. And then we have some partnerships with some agencies, so Better Lesson is our partner on blended learning, I'm happy to report this year we had seventy-three active instructional staff members working with mentors and incorporating those blended learning techniques into the lesson planning and getting them into the classroom. We continue our partnership with James Madison University and the ISTI standards, those are the teacher certifications, we've got a teacher track that Mr. Hernandez continues to work to get teachers certified in these, these techniques, and then this summer, he will be launching the evaluator certification track for a few of his staff members, they'll be going through that training. And then we partner with the Buck Institute that provides professional, or excuse me, project-based learning practices for instructional staff members and our coaches. Google Apps for Education, it's now, they've changed the name, it's actually called G-Suite, if you keep up with that, but we've had that at the, at the high school for the past three years, each student get an account, we rolled that to the middle school two years ago, and then this past year, we pushed it down to Mayfield, so all the fifth and sixth graders received individual Google accounts and working with their teachers and the principal on a strategy on how to utilize that, it provided the teachers access to the Google Classroom, incorporating more technology-based lessons to that level, and we are currently finalizing a rollout strategy for our elementary children to create them Google accounts as well, that'll completely be at the teachers' discretion on how they utilize that, but it is in preparation, and I'll talk in just a few minutes on our learning management system, which will require individual logins, and so we've, we've been able to tie that through these Google accounts, so they're going to serve multiple purposes. This year, we launched a digital, a new digital citizenship curriculum with Internet Safety, and it was launched at all levels this year, we partnered with a company called Learning.com for K-4 and Common Sense Media for grades five through twelve. And then, in addition to that, we also launched a new digital literacy program at the elementary level, our K-through-four levels, on teaching the technology techniques, this is what our computer labs, our STEM labs kind of focus on, being able to utilize this, this technology. Again, we use Learning.com as our partner for that. As you heard, Ms. Murphy come up, there's been an emphasis on coding skills, especially with the summer camps coming up, there's coding built into this digital literacy framework, all the schools participated to some extent with our National Coding Week back in the fall, and so it continues to promote that. We held, made available Internet Safety Night in April, that was at Mayfield Intermediate School, and so there's been a big push on Internet Safety and, and being these twenty-first century skills we talked about. Our instructional team has been working on identifying our learning content management system, LCMS, if you're familiar with Blackboard, that's one of the more popular ones, the team- The team gathered requirements, made up metrics and matrices on what it is the features they were looking for. They analyzed a few products, and a vendor called Schoology was selected. And you'll be hearing more about that in the coming months as the rollout begins to take place. Mr. Hernandez and his team have been working on an 18-month, it's a very large-scale project to push out, but an 18-month ramp-up implementation. In the next school year, we're going to see some pilots, small-scale pilots go forth at all levels on utilizing that. So there'll be more to come on that. In coordination with our technology plan, we've been doing a lot of planning. We've continued a lot of planning. We regularly have our technology advisory board meetings at central office. All of the agendas, all the minutes are publicly posted online. You just go to our website, and you can read what we, what we discuss and what we look through. Again, the building-level technology plans, we've got the schools now taking a much more active role in their planning on what they're doing with the devices that we're providing them, how they're going to best utilize or shift existing resources to close those gaps. We've done an annual review of our goals, strategies, and objectives. It's the big matrix that was at the end of the technology plan. That is posted online. You go to our website, and you can see that. We've taken a look at all 60-plus of those, those targets that we were going to hit and updated those and made some revisions. We've created a technology profile document. It's roughly a 40-page document that identifies what technologies that we need in each of our classrooms. Classrooms of varying sizes, from document cameras, number of computers, tablets, et cetera. That has been posted, that's available to all our MCPS staff on our Internet. You can log in and access that document and see, and we've used that all this year in our planning and all of our purchasing decisions have been toward that document to help us with our standards. Coming out off of our tab this year was a new subcommittee that was formed. One of our big challenges in the division is keeping up with the massive amounts of instructional resources that are technology-based out there. The majority of them are on the Internet or cloud-based. We're trying to do reviews of those, make sure they match our privacy requirements, make sure they protect the data of our students. And so a subcommittee was formed on, to develop a framework and a formal workflow for teachers to be able to find an instructional resource, submit it for review, it'll follow all the way down the path, and it'll be looked at with several aspects, and then to a final decision. And this will be for all, applications, interactive websites, apps for tablet devices. And so next year, the process is scheduled to go in place. And as a, as a result of that, we are creating a soft, an online software database. It's going to be a searchable repository of all of the instructional resources that we've evaluated, that we looked at. You'll be able to search by grade level, by subject. And so that subcommittee has been working to put that database together as well. And that'll be posted most likely on our Internet site, on our new website. So it'll be behind the login, but accessible to all, all staff members. And then we've continued our project assessment reviews. That's something we started a few years ago. We provide a formal review and a formal report following that. We've done quite a few this year as well. We look at hardware, we look at software. Again, there's been an increased focus on data protection and data privacy with that. Our customer support, we were fortunate enough to grow by one staff member this year. We were able to add a technology support specialist. And in doing so, it allowed for some reassignment of our school-based technology personnel to better sort of needs of our elementary schools. And it's working out very, very well. We continue to promote our IT ticket system that we put in place a little over two years ago. We've seen it grow, I believe about 40% over, over last year's monthly volume, which is very good. Anytime we can get a ticket submitted, there are multiple eyes that get on it, lots of alerts go off. We do things from central office, and resolution is typically faster if they do it, if our, if our customers submit it that way. And then we also launched a customer satisfaction survey for one out of every five of our tickets when they're closed. It sends a brief five-question survey. And I'm happy to report, to date, we've got 97% that are very satisfied or satisfied with the completion time and the overall resolution. So we're striving to provide the best service we can to our customers and our stakeholders. For our hardware, we're in our third year of our computer replacement program of its implementation. And it's a perpetual program to make sure that our computers are replaced and we don't end up with quite outdated hardware. Currently, we're on a six-year, six-year computer lifecycle. We've been able to keep up with that pace, thankfully. This year, we've replaced just about 1,200 computers in the division. We have added more than 2,500 laptops just in the last three fiscal years. We're now at 90% of our computers are laptops compared to the 2014-2015 school year. At the start of it, we were at 38%. So just in a few years, we've radically transformed the landscape of our schools with making it, things mobile for our teachers and our students. We're in our third year of the E-Learning Backpack Initiative at Osborne. Once again, we, we launched, I think, 575 tablet computers at the beginning of the year. This got all of our grades this year, ninth through 12th. They all have a personal take-home device, so we're supporting more than 2,000 of those at the high school. Mr. Watley runs our dad desk, the device assistant desk, with his, with his technician and takes care of that. Things have been going well with that. We are actually testing, doing SOL testing on some of the student devices as well this year. So that, so far, is going well. We've seen a large surge in our instructional tablets. We adopted iPads, Apple iPads, a couple of years ago as our standard. And we've gone, I think, when I got here, about two and a half years ago, I think we had 80. We now will have 1,100 by the end of summer, primarily at the elementary level. So that's led to an increase in instructional apps that are, and resources that are made available to our students. And then we also launched this year, in keeping up with these life cycles, we implemented a battery replacement program. One of the big complaints that we got was, "Well, I've got a laptop, but the battery's five years old, and it doesn't last but an hour if it's not charged." So in year, at the end of year three of our six-year lifecycle, we're going to start replacing the batteries in these devices. And this year, we purchased more than 400 batteries to get that program going. Our infrastructure, just last month, we doubled our bandwidth. We were able to negotiate actually a lower price for twice the bandwidth, which was pretty good. So we went from 500 megabit to a 1 gigabit circuit. We project that we will continue to have to grow rapidly to keep up. The very next day, going from 500 to a 1 gigabit, we saw speeds, our request hit 600 to 700 megabits of that, the very next day. So the old saying's true, if you, if you build it, it'll come. So we see that, I mean, that chart just looks like that, because we're adding, if you think about it, we're adding over 1,000 tablets and 2,500 additional devices. They're all competing for the same bandwidth. So in keeping up with that, continue with our wireless infrastructure. We did replacements back at spring break at Mayfield, Hayden, and Weems, updated to the latest and greatest radio frequencies, gives us better speeds, better efficiencies. We have some wired infrastructure or our network upgrades scheduled for the summer. We purchased the equipment. It's being staged now. That will also happen at Hayden and Weems. At the beginning of the year, we replaced our Internet content filtering system. Blue Coat is the name of the vendor. Touched a few nerves that when you start messing with people's access on things, but we were operating on a seven-to-eight-year-old system that just could not keep up with the demands of our growing school system. And so now we have one of the industry leaders in this, Blue Coat. It's a multi-tiered, it's actually three, three systems in one that we have, and so that is working out well. And then we continue to strive to virtualize as much as we can in our data center. So what that means is, is taking a physical server and make it into the software. And we've been able to do that. We'll continue to do that this summer. We'll pull out some physical servers. That reduces our need for electricity, reduces the cooling that we need. But it also adds us, benefits to us to be able to be a little bit more flexible with, with maintenance and moving things and restoring things more quickly. Baldwin Elementary and Intermediate, the new schools, I think you heard about them. We spent about 18 months of planning, partnering with our maintenance crew, support services, the construction crew. I'm happy to say, with all that planning, it all came together, went out with relatively few issues for our move-in. It kind of consumed our fall. We were a little bit late on getting some of our other initiatives going this, this school year. Of that, but we deployed computers, tablets, more than 70 interactive projectors, 150, I think, telephones. We provided support to maintenance for IP-based camera systems, clocks, public address, the digital sign outside. So it all came together very well. We're very proud of the work that was done, the teamwork that was done on that. Our interactive projection systems, this was a project I kind of took on myself when I got here. We have completed phase one and phase two. Let me just remind you, phase one. Day one, when I got here, was having principals daily call me and say, "I need projectors. I, I don't have a projector." So we had more than 70 rooms, instructional spaces in the school, so they had no, no projection at all. And so phase one, it was to get those, get those remedied. We were able to do that within that first year. And then phase two was to go and get about another 80 to 90 off of these carts that were in the middle of the classroom with wires everywhere into the ceilings. We completed that last summer. And so we're into phase three, and that entails us migrating all the legacy things. You can go in and see our old smart boards, our projectors that are 10, 10 years old, that are, that are growing dim, and migrating those to the new Epson Interactive System, what we put in Baldwin. By the end of summer, we will have Hayden and Weems will be all but just a few. That'll be done by the fall, so we'll have Baldwin, Hayden, and Weems up to that standard by the end of this summer. And then we will continue with our, with our migration plan. This year was the year of security. Even if we don't say it, it's still going to go into next year being the year of security. Security is going to be a big focus in all that, that we do. Again, we launched the digital citizenship curriculum to raise awareness for our students on how to stay safe, what to look for, the pitfalls and the threats that are out there. We continue to partner with a company, a third-party company, to provide us with firewall and our perimeter network management. They alert us quite often, actually, when we're getting pinged by overseas, watch out in, as well as some internal things that are going out that we may not otherwise know. So that's helping to knock down some of that suspicious activity. We've held weekly IT security meetings of this week, actually, every Wednesday morning at 7:30. We've got one tomorrow, where we take some security-related typically network, sometimes our computers, and we break down what we're doing, what the industry says we should be doing, and how we, how we get from here to there. And it's helped us identify a lot of weaknesses and, and opportunities for improvement that we can do. We've created a draft framework for disaster recovery and business continuity. That's how do we respond, keep things operational in the event of a disaster if we're interrupted for some reason. That's come together. We have a, a rough outline on all the, those major sections of that. We've identified every one of our systems, and we're starting to fill out the details on what those risks are for each of our systems, how we can mitigate those risks. That has identified, just like the security meeting, several opportunities for improvement for us, and we've been working to do that. We work to try to reduce the number of usernames and passwords for our people. We've been able to integrate some of our online accounts and our systems with our Active Directory or our MCPS network accounts. This year, we were able to do Power School, we were able to do a new website, we were able to do our Google environment. They all now use the same, your same username and password, and we'll continue to, to do that where, where it's feasible. And then we've had a real nice increase in communications on security. All four of our IT newsletters this year had an article or more focusing on how to protect ourselves, how we protect data, what we can do to be a little better stewards of our information. During our meetings, several discussions have been held this year. And so I think it's very, it was very, a good idea to make this the year of security, but I think we're seeing some good result because of it. And that's my update. I know that's a lot, but.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, sir?
It was a whole lot, and thank you. My really, only real question going through, you mentioned the student mobile devices being used in testing. Does that mean at some point, we'll be able to eliminate the laptop carts, or will they still be, be needed for some kind of academic application? No answer now, but it's just thought, right?
At the, at the moment, we're doing, we're talking about the student tablets, the one-to-one tablets, E-Learning Backpack. Those are still technically MCPS property that we can, we control. If you're going into a different direction where they're student-owned devices, we may have some challenges. We have some policies and things that have to be pushed to that, that we're required to do by the testing agency. It's not out of the realm, but it will certainly reduce, if everything holds true, it will reduce the number we need at Osborne.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I am amazed about how much I understood. Not all, but by a stretch of imagination, but there was a lot of information there, and I was kind of impressed with myself a little bit there, mostly because over the years, you've educated us, and we appreciate that. I really like the fact that 97% of your customers are satisfied. Teachers and customers that are satisfied are going to do a better job for our kids, and so that's very important, and I appreciate that very much. You say that every three years, we're replacing the batteries now on laptops.
That's the goal.
Is that whether they need it or not, because they're going to need it?
Yeah.
They are going to need them. It's not, they're going to go. Okay? And I did understand a lot of what you said. Is everything working the way it should? Are our SOLs going the way they should? Is everything, are you okay with the way everything's going? Because, I don't know. You know, I, I need your expertise. Are we on the right path? Is everything?
Yes.
Good, and we're rolling?
That's where you go, yeah. We're absolutely on the right path. And that's not to say we don't have, we don't have pickups in, in our technology.
But you speaking to me rather than going through the technology mumbo jumbo, we're rolling, and everything's good, and you're satisfied with where we're going right now and everything's working.
Absolutely.
As well as can be expected at this point.
As well. Certainly, if we, you know, with additional funding, we could do a lot more.
Yeah, good luck with that one.
I'm not here to have.
Scott, you want to handle that?
But I'm extremely pleased with what we've been able to do with the resources we have to implement such change, at least in the two and a half years that I've been here. I can see it, a drastic change just in that short time. I think we've been, tried to been very good stewards of our, the money we do have and try to maximize it as best we can and be able to get the devices into the hands of our students, which is the most critical.
Good. That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you. Nobody else? Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll move on to the action agenda, student representatives for the 2017-2018 school year. Let me call on you, Ms. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In an effort to get the student perspective, each year, we look to appoint two students to serve as student representatives to our school board, to serve in a non-voting advisory capacity. This opportunity is open to rising juniors and seniors that meet the requirements, which include academics and attendance. And it's based on application with letters of recommendation from their peers and from adults. Interviews are conducted for all of those that have applied. And with that, can I make a motion now?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas appoint Ethan Anderson and John Gabriel Rosario Cruz as student representatives for the 2017-2018 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Seberg, second by Mr. Albrecht. Is there any discussion? We can discuss afterwards, too, if you would like. Okay. I have a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas appoint Ethan Anderson and John Gabriel Rosario Cruz as the student representatives for the 2017-2018 school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0. Congratulations, gentlemen. If you'd like to come up here with Ms. Seberg and. She's pretty slick. They don't know to stand back here. Yeah, I want a picture of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I want a picture of them.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Gentlemen, we've gone from two ladies to two gentlemen, so I expect good things from you, good attendance, good humor. You have to realize who you're dealing with here. I will be your chairman for at least half of the year. We'll see what happens in January. And as Iris can attest, I will, you know, make fun every now and again, so take it with good humor, if you don't mind. Okay? Congratulations. Anyone else? We look forward to working with you. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Albrecht, can I get a motion for closed session?
As soon as my computer goes to that part. Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemption from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 22.1277.2.1 of the Code of Virginia as amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Students STUE 1617-15, 1617-01, 1617-16, and 1617-17. And that we enter closed session pursuant to exemption as allowed by Section 2.23711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Personnel Matter 1617-1601 and 1617-1669.
I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, a second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the school board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 22.1-277.2:1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Students STUE 1617-15-01-16 and -17. And 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Personnel Matter PERS 1617-1601 and 1669. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry 6-0. Thank you all.